Ready, Mike?
Yeah. Rock and roll.
All right. All right, we'll call the meeting of the City of Shenandoah a regular council meeting of September 22nd, 2001 at 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the roll, and I noticed that everyone is here with the exception of the mayor, who has notified the city per ordinance that he was out of town and he would not attend, so he's excused. Also want to, for the public, report that Kathy Ryer is a little under the weather, so we hope that she gets better, and Joseph has taken her spot this evening. So I'm going to wish everyone to stand, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and a short indication. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with remit and justice for all.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we navigate through this city council agenda this evening. Please help us engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Father, please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the residents, the businesses, the partners, staff, and friends of the city. And remind us that all we accomplished this evening is done with the best of our ability and for the greater good of the community. Father, we also ask that your grace is shed on all of the people in the United States and all over the world suffering with this darn Corona-19 virus. And if you bless them with a speedy recovery and bring this pandemic to a swift end. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
With that, we'll move into item number five, which is the Citizens Forum, and I don't have anyone that's signed up. So we'll move on to item number six, Council Inquirer. Anyone else who's got anything?
Pass.
Good.
Good.
Okay, we'll go into item number seven, which is Rich's favorite topic, the presentation of the monthly MDD report.
Now, we close out the year, the budget year for 2021, all of our ACP projects are 90% complete and all ready to go under construction in December. Let's take a look. The other notable thing was that under the East Side Wetlands permit, that we're looking at a target date of getting that permit in December of 2021. So that is indeed good news. I think that kind of highlights it. We didn't have an MDD this evening, and next month I will have a new capital project, so Lisa will have everything all lined out for me, so that I'll have that ready for the update, and some of these items will move another sheet away. That's it.
Thank you, Ron. With that, we'll just go into item number eight, which is discussion and possible action to approve the investment policy.
Mayor and Council, this is a recurrent item that needs to be approved every year by the Public Improvement Funds Act. There was no changes to the policy this year. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is the first year, Rich and I are the committee, and this is the first year that I haven't tweaked it at all, right? At least it's like, if you would just leave the audit alone. All right, thanks.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? carries 5-0. Item number nine, discussion and possible action, approve the purchase agreement for police Tahos.
Mayor and Council, this is very similar to the letter of intent that we signed with Simmons Martin last year in order to secure a vehicle before October 1st, when the actual purchasing will open up for the new year. Like with everything else, we're seeing inflation hit, so vehicle prices are going up, so we were able to secure one Tahoe at the current price that hasn't been changed because of their inventory, hasn't increased because of their inventory. So this is just to sign a letter of intent saying that we are going to purchase that one on October 1st, when the purchase it opens up. It's just a guarantee for them so that they know it's sold, and they're not holding it for nothing.
For the '22 model year, they're not available right now, right? Basically?
Essentially, yes. So that's part of the issues we're running into right now, is just the lack of availability of the law enforcement-specific vehicles. So what, if we were to go to a dealership right now and try to order one, they're 270 days out. So what we're trying to do is secure what we can from a location, Simmons Martin, that has one at the price that is specific to our budget. The problem is, is that Byboard has increased their Tahos, at this time, $5,000. So that's a situation that we're running into. There's a possible solution for that. One solution could be that we could purchase a Charger instead of doing the Tahos, because it's significantly less. I would prefer not to go to anything versus a V8, because I don't, my professional opinion and my experience is that nothing but a V8 is going to hold up to the abuse that law enforcement gives of the vehicles. My experience, V6s do not hold up, and not only that, but you have the front-end issues being a front-wheel-drive vehicle. So with that, you know, the, really the only other vehicles out there that have the V8s are the Chargers, the Tahos, the Durangos, and then a truck, but a truck would not be conducive to a vehicle for our area. So the only other vehicles would be, basically for the V8s, would be the Chargers and the Durangos, so.
I like a motion to approve a letter of intent.
Second. Motion by Mike McLeod, and a second by Ted Fletcher. Any discussion?
I would agree with the chief in keeping with the Tahos, even looking at a Charger. How would that affect prisoner transport?
It is a smaller vehicle.
And equipment, as well.
Yeah, right. It is a smaller vehicle, but it's one of those situations that, you know, just trying to be cost-effective with what we have. I know that our budget, we budgeted for 75 completion per vehicle, and the Tahos with the $5,000 increase would not fit within that budget. So the alternative would be to go with the Chargers.
And you've cut the cost a lot by retaining the vehicles longer than the previous administration did. You're keeping the vehicles at least two years longer, we haven't had any negative influences with that. And the part that's easy to forget is, there's the car, and then there's about almost 15 grand of equipment that gets put on it with the lighting and everything. So keeping those cars longer the way you've been doing is great.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding additional funding for the Halle Hill Park construction.
Yes, Mayor, Pro-Tim, and Council. I'll give a quick background on this topic, hit some of the high numbers, and then some of the actions staff took, and then we can go into any of the details that Council's interested in discussing with staff. But the design for the park is nearly complete, we're almost 100%. And with that 100% design, we had some final cost estimates for the park with current, you know, inflation prices that we're kind of seeing in construction materials. It includes the drainage, the quantity of lights, we need to address the security concerns. And there was some expansion in scope because some of the parking, we needed to add an ADA-accessible parking space now that this is going to be used as a park. So the latest cost estimates for construction pushed to almost $440,000, and we currently have $250,000 budgeted by the MDD. So staff immediately took a look at what could be cut, and after a lot of decision and discussion, where staff was able to cut out about $65,000 from that original $440, which got that price down to about $373,000. Trees were also broken out as a separate item, mainly in part because when MDD opted to fund the park, they had mentioned as a board that they wanted to see some additional trees and vegetation. That wasn't an anticipated cost in the original scope, so that was broken out. The trees could be cut to bring that price closer to the original $250 budgeted. If we cut the trees, it would bring it to $304,000, but that would not be staff's recommendation. I think they're going to help the aesthetics of the park. And I've actually got some photographs in the agenda packet that we can look at as we discuss that. So all the high numbers discussed, basically what staff's recommending is for city council to ask the MDD to fund an additional $125,000 for the toddler park. That will get the park with all the hardscape amenities, it will get the additional trees and vegetation that was requested by the MDD board. And so that's going to be staff's ultimate recommendation. And welcome to answer any questions that you may have, and we can look at some.
When the MDD was going through budget this year, it was my understanding that $250 was allocated just this year, but additional funding would be considered in next year's budget. Have you discussed that with President Beavers at all?
No, have not discussed that. And bringing this back would be, you know, would be that additional funding to help get this park finalized. But that's going to be up to the board to decide.
Are we requesting them to put it in this year's budget? Or is my understanding that from budget workshop with MDD was that this was phase one of the park funding, because it wasn't going to all be completed this year, and so part of it was going to roll into next year, and that's why it was split? I could be mistaken, but...
Right now, it's all designed as getting the complete park in place. We could phase it out if there are budget constraints. Ultimately, it would add some costs, because now you're breaking the one project into two. It could be broken out into phases, but I think in the end you're going to pay more if you go that route. That'd be my opinion.
I'm all for bringing it back to MDD's for consideration.
Do we need to make a motion or something, or is this just discussion?
It's just discussion, I understand.
Is this discussion?
If there is possible action, too.
Possible action.
Right.
Do I need a motion?
I move to bring it back to MDD for discussion, for request for funding.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fletcher, second by Councilman Escada. Any further discussion?
Yes. Thanks for the update, Joseph. It's really good. Nice work on managing the cost.
Thank you.
Just remember back to 2016, 2015, 2016, Gary Watson, Gene Teague approved a $2.5 million park to be in the same spot, was a concrete monstrosity, is my recollection. So I really like what you guys have done. I did want to consider another aspect to it, though, in terms of the fencing that exists around the park. We do have, we're from a range of maybe six properties that have chain-link fences. Some of them are clean, some of them have mostly vegetation going all over them. If it isn't some way that we can approach the owners and maybe, some people may not want to see the new park, because it's going to have people in it all the time versus the woodlands that they were used to see. And so if there's any way that maybe we can share the cost of erecting privacy fences for those people, you know, having the good side face the park, and if that's something we do. Not everybody will want to see the park, but some people will. On the main park, we've got, at least I think Wally Westbrook's place has a beautiful fence, and there's another one that's wrought iron as well. So some people want to see the park and some people don't, but I don't think in the future we really want to see chain-link fences, so maybe we can help encourage moving that along. So I don't know what the cost would be for our share to approach folks, but just an idea.
Okay. I will say that that was, in essence, a lot of the reasoning for the vegetative screening around the perimeter was to provide some sort of screening, so when someone's using the park, they're not looking directly into someone's backyard who doesn't have a fence erected. And that, you know, we focused on, you know, Vitexes, Wax Murders, shorter, shrub-like, so they'll really fill out and provide a vegetative fence, I'll call it. So that was a thought process of staff.
I think we have time to maybe approach some of the folks, too, as well, just to, we've got time. It could very well be that the vegetation barriers ultimately the way to go in terms of cost. It was just an option. I don't know, I don't have any idea how much the fences would cost, and what our share of that would be, or if the people who live there have any interest in sharing that cost.
And fortunately, right now, the cost of the fence is like four times.
30 to 35 linear feet.
Yeah, four times.
We'll be close to finishing the park when? Ballpark?
Well, I think...
Hopefully, I'm getting, hopefully the lumber prices will stabilize by then.
If we can get funding approved, then we can be done, you know, by May, right?
Well, I think it's a good idea, but I think that'd be a separate item altogether.
What?
The fence ends.
Oh, yeah.
As far as going to what the motion is right now. But it's a good point.
You know, I'm a big fan of this. It's what we've, the residents have asked for, is a quiet space, a space to take a walk, a space to still enjoy nature. So, you know, I want this to get moved ahead, and I think the best way to do that is to send it back to MDD and see if they have money, and if they don't, bring it back to us and see if we have money. I mean, that's, hopefully MDD will see the value in doing this for our residents, so...
Well, this is right up MDD's alley of projects to approve, and so by all means, I think it should go back to the MDD for a request for funding. We also have about a month to swag what the cost of the fence might be.
Absolutely. So there's a lot of discussion on that.
I'm curious, has there been any opposition to this project at all by the residents that are affected by?
None that I know of. We've had a town hall last year, got some residents, not a lot, but we haven't had any adverse. I have not heard any adverse. I can't speak forever.
Yeah, I think all the surveys and everything said everybody was happy to keep it under half a million dollars.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number 11, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance by the City of Shenandoah, Texas, denying the distribution cost recovery factor rate increase request of Energy Texas Incorporated filed on or about August 31st, 2021, setting just and reasonable rates for Energy Texas Incorporated for service within the municipal limits, funding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings.
I move that we adopt the ordinance to deny the distribution cost recovery factor rate.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fletcher, second by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. Item number 12, discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution. Resolution designating of a representative and an alternate to the Houston Galveston Area Council 2022 General Assembly. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, or make motion that we approve, the existing representatives, Councilman Bright and Councilman Raymaker, for the HGAC's General Assembly.
Second.
I accept.
Doesn't run matter.
Fletcher, second by Councilman McLeod. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 13, discussion regarding the use of the tennis courts at the city park.
Council, about three months ago, we received a number of complaints that a tennis pro was at the tennis courts giving lessons and telling residents who appeared that he had reserved the courts for the afternoon and they needed to leave. We had our code enforcement officer go out and tell him that the courts were not, first of all, he obviously didn't have them reserved, because we don't, and that he could not tell residents that. And then we had a second complaint. I wrote a letter to this gentleman, and that, we thought, resolved the problem. On September 8th, we got three more complaints from residents that they were being told that they could not use the tennis courts because he had them reserved. So we are, first of all, tonight is to bring this to your attention, and what we are proposing for the moment is to replace our current sign on the tennis courts with one that now will have the similar message about skateboarding and no bicycle riding. But to say, number one, that the tennis courts cannot be reserved, and number two, that the tennis courts cannot be used for paid training, hoping that that will resolve the problem and certainly notify our residents if they're told that the courts are reserved, that, no, that's not true. So unless city council wants to do anything different, we propose that we place that sign at the tennis courts, and hopefully that resolves the problem.
So we'll place this on a future agenda?
Hopefully, we won't need to. Hopefully, the sign will work.
Well, it'll communicate what the current reality is, and then if we have to do something further, we can.
Right. We definitely want our residents to know if they're told that tennis courts are reserved, the sign will say in large print that you can't do it.
Do we have a, is there a time limit for use on?
We do not have one, and we discussed internally on staff, putting a time limit, an hour, 90 minutes, something. And our thought process was, let's see if we can do the minimum, and then if we need to come back to council for something more, we'll do so. But we certainly want council to be aware of the problem and know why we're changing the signage.
And I'll just add that another concern we had was somebody will say, well, it says I can play for 90 minutes, I got 90 more minutes, you know, even if they'd already been there an hour, you know, leave me alone. Use it as justification.
90 minutes in a 24-hour period. You'd have to, we'll have to look at that. But hopefully the sign will communicate the message that these courts are for the public's use, so...
I mean, if it becomes a problem, I've seen other park districts go with a rack system so that, okay, the courts have, both courts are full, I put my rack up, means I'm the next one up, and for the folks out on the court, you know, kind of wrap it up in 30 minutes, okay? So somebody else can get out, and it's like, maybe play no add scoring instead of deuce games. And so that's an option. I don't think it would necessarily that point yet.
Right.
Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll move on to item number 14, discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for August 2021. Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve and ratify the accounts payable.
Motion by Councilman Fletcher, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Raymaker, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carries 5-0. Number 15 is our second Citizens Forum, and don't have anyone signed up to speak. So we'll move on to item number 16, City Administrator Updates. Joseph?
I do have a handful here. A couple are some Public Works projects, some of my favorites. The MCC project is underway at Water Plant 2. The old MCC has been demoed, and we should hopefully be getting the new one on Friday for assembly. So that project is moving along on schedule.
So the well's offline right now.
Yes, sir. Also, the...
Did you take a photo of it, so we can see how wonderful the new one looks in comparison?
We do have some photos of it, yes. We are going to try to keep as many spare parts off of it as possible, because some of them are reusable.
I've seen the old one, so it can't help but look wonderful in comparison.
Also, the conversion to the liquid chlorine system at the pool is underway and should be finished by the end of the week.
Awesome.
That'll, that'll help us save a lot of money over the upcoming years. We are going to leave the...
You know we like to save money.
Yes. We did opt to leave the old system in place. It could still be used. I mean, it has to be supplemented with liquid chlorine anyway, but...
You got diverter valves in there?
Yes, sir. Also, impact fees, just a reminder, they will be taking effect October 1. It's been a year, I know time flies. New information is going to be provided on the Building Apartments website to help developers redevelopment calculate what this cost is.
Do you want to reiterate for the audience at home what the impact fees do?
Yes, so what the impact fees do are, it helps share the cost of expansion of our water and wastewater treatment system as new developments and redevelopments come online with the city. So rather than all the current existing customers paying for those future upgrades, the developments causing those upgrades to happen are paying their, their cost of it.
So unlike the fallacy that we've heard before about the growth of the city is bad because the city is going to pay for this extra, the impact fees protect us from that?
Yes, they do a lot to, again, save the city a lot of money and put some of those costs to be created.
Thank you for reiterating that.
And then finally, just a couple dates note. Tomorrow, we have a blood drive here at City Hall, it's going to be in the community room. Please donate if you're able to. And last October 4th is National Light Out. It's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the park, and it's a really great event. Get your family out there, meet our local police officers and other first responders in this area. That's all I have.
Very good. And with that, we will not adjourn, but recess the open meeting to go into executive session.
Are we going to do any council inquiry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that. Council inquiry.
Yeah, I want to address an issue that popped up on social media, I think it was today, regarding the traffic unwelming, specifically the, at the school, the Quest School, the unwelming. There seems to be a lot of confusion by some about the traffic flow there. I guess the person who initiated the issue apparently forgot that that is a school zone, that it does have a speed limit, and that there is, that there are safety measures for the safety of both the children at the school and the, and the traffic pattern there. I understand that, well, I have seen personally the change in the traffic pattern and the steps that the school has taken to improve, to attempt to improve... the steps that the school has taken to, to improve, to attempt to improve the, the traffic flow there unwelming. And I want to give the chief an opportunity to address this because he also has met with the, the staff at the school regarding the matter. Chief, can you elaborate on?
Yes, so Director Schaefer at the Quest Collegiate Academy, I've been in contact with him, I've actually been in contact with him about the traffic and about the pick-up and drop-off situation since the, the school was established. And from the time that they started, they had significantly decreased the amount of time that it takes for the, the pick-up and drop-off. So when collegiate, Quest Collegiate started last year, they only had, they had two hundred and forty students, at this time, they have three hundred and fifty students. So they've increased the, the amount of kids that they, that they have significantly. So of course, there's going to be an increase in traffic in the area. However, Lisa, can you bring up the map?
So we've looked at this, and the only way possible to alleviate any of this traffic would be to, to widen, widen well, because you have the sidewalks, which have the curbs on this side, and then you have the ditches on this side. So there's no place for these vehicles to go. Inside the school, they've made this, the pick-up and drop-off as efficient as they possibly can. You're talking about hundreds of cars going in here and dropping off three hundred and fifty students because there is no bus. So they're dropping three hundred and fifty students off, and this is taking them approximately twenty minutes. So we're inconveniencing people for about twenty minutes on well during the school times. If we were to bring vehicles inside the, the pool parking lot, that would also, in the afternoon time, affect the pool patrons from going into, and parking inside the parking lot. Not only that, but this would cause a traffic jam at the entrance because it's just a one-way entrance, there's not an exit there as well, it's just a small entrance. So what you would, what this would create is a traffic jam for vehicles trying to pull in, you would have this line going, then vehicles trying to pull out. If you have vehicles having to wait for these other vehicles to pull in, so the other vehicles to pull out, that would cause a further delay to the, to the traffic and, in the whole situation. So creating this traffic jam here, pulling people into here, this is not big enough to have vehicles pulling in and out right here. Like I said, some, you have SUVs, you have crew cab trucks pulling in here, they're going to have to swing out wide, this is going to cause these vehicles to have to stop and further delay the pick-up and drop-off, which would exceed the twenty minutes that they have now. And not only that, but it wouldn't alleviate much of, of this because you would have this traffic jam and vehicles would continue to back up on well. So the way it's being run currently is the most efficient way that it can possibly be run. It is an inconvenience, but it is also a school zone. School zones are meant to be an inconvenience, they're meant for you to slow down, they're meant for you to stay off your, your cell phones and not video people while you're going down here. That's what it's meant for, is so, to, to safety of the kids, it's going to be an inconvenience, but for only in the morning time and the afternoon time. If you're in a hurry to go to work, find another alternate route, we have multiple alternate routes through the city that you don't have to drive through here during those times.
I don't think you summarized the best one, you said it's twenty minutes, and it is a school zone, and I don't care what school zone you're in, whether it's College Park High School, or, you know, it's David Elementary, or Lamar, or, you know, I know Oak Ridge doesn't have any problems with their school zone, do they, Mike?
Not at all.
In and out, every quarter, you know, nobody's on the road, I mean, give me a break. Twenty minutes for a school zone, that's probably the fastest, I mean, I have five kids, and at some point in time, driven them all to school, and to sit for twenty minutes, I mean, just to-
And it's a fraction of the time that's allotted for the school zone, right? I mean, what is, what is the time that, it's probably more than forty-five minutes or hours.
Well, Shenandoah loves our kids, and we're going to do everything we can to protect our kids.
Exactly, and that's what this school zone's about, it's about protection of the kids.
Yep.
But I, Councilman Fletcher, going back to what you were saying, I've, I've contacted CISD since they have the expertise on dealing with schools and, and these situations, I talked to them, and they have notified me that they have a similar situation on several of their schools, and they let it work itself out, and they said the same thing that I stated is that it's going to be a little bit of inconvenience for a short time, and that it takes them approximately twenty minutes as well.
I know one of the concerns was emergency vehicles, and there's not an issue with getting an emergency vehicle down well during school zone time?
No, sir, no, sir. And like I said, the only solution would be to widen well and take out, take out the sidewalks so that vehicles can pull to the side and you have a turn lane, that's the only other solution we could possibly do.
Well, if we poured the sidewalk straight, we probably could have used them as a turn lane.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, that's all I have.
Thanks, Trey. No, I just wanted to add, I'm starting my inquiry now, then. But I think it is terribly irresponsible of a former mayor to be, Gary Watts, to be driving through a school zone with his camera phone going, you can see, he drops it into his lap at the end of the video, it's totally irresponsible for him to be going through a school zone, taking videos in, in a zone where you're not even supposed to be having your, your cellphone out. That's, that's enough on that. Safe streets, what are we doing with safe streets this year?
So with y'all's approval, we'll do it continued like we did last year. I think that that was a big hit, doing the parade, I think that, that allows the opportunity for the, the residents to enjoy us coming by and handing out candy, and at the same time, they can enjoy going out with their families and, and doing the trick-or-treating.
And I will know better than to wear flip flops.
Maybe, I know, right?
All right, that's it, thanks.
I'm good. You're good? Right? I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so now, we will suspend the regular meeting at seven thirty-nine and go into executive session. session. Okay, we'll reconvene the city council meeting at 8:03. For the record, in executive session, no action was taken. We'll adjourn at 8:03.